Seven hundred and sixty dollars into his equipment for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Do I hear a motion that we approve this line item transfer?
I'll also make that motion here.
Motion made by Commissioner Martinez. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Alright. The next item we have on the agenda this morning is our creation.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a, I'm asking the court to approve to purchase a drug and alcohol cleared house is, is what we test our employees in the precincts for drug and alcohol. So, in order for us to, they want us to do a batch at a time versus a monthly. So, I'm asking the court to approve the purchase of twenty, a testings for twenty-five dollars or fifty testings for sixty-two, fifty.
Is this the?
That's, well, it's fifty tests for that amount or twenty tests for the twenty-five?
Okay.
Twenty-five dollars?
We're gonna be using them for.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna be using them for a while, so, I mean,
Yeah.
the fifties will be a better deal, isn't it?
Yes, it is. I just, I mean, I'll do whatever y'all want. I was just trying to get a concept of how many we'd use per year to at least have an idea and come to you annually to get it approved. If y'all wanna do the fifty, that's fine with me, but I may not be coming to y'all for another two years, you know?
Do we average about twenty-five a year?
Well, we, we average at least twenty. And like I said, I mean, I don't know, you never know when they're coming, so.
Now, we could always, we could always request more.
Yes.
Also.
Yeah, and we can re, we can request some at random, you know, randomly, so.
We might get that too.
It's possible. Maybe not this year, but, you know.
Two years.
Yeah.
Do I hear a request, our motion to purchase these drug tests kits in this, I guess, format? Do we want about twenty or fifty?
I guess probably be better if she went ahead and got the twenty and see how it works for her. Like I said, she needs them in addition. She can always get them, so.
Alright. You put that.
I'll put down a form of motion.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Cornell that we buy the twenty tests. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, my next item is the investment portfolio for the first quarter of the year ending March thirtieth. I apologize, I intended to report this last court, but it just, it's not possible for us. I wanna refer to page three. In the second paragraph, the overall interest spread for this quarter is fifty-eight thousand, forty-six dollars and twenty cents. And if you'll look at page number five, it will show you, it's gonna show you the interest. I'm sorry, guys. It's page six, not five. It'll show you the interest five hundred, okay?
Is this up or down?
It's down.
Down.
I'm not sure. I didn't go in and look at last year's, but it's down. Pretty sure. Ask the court to approve the interest this reporting.
Alright. I have a request that the investment portfolio be, be approved for the quarter ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion?
All those opposed?
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sorry, I didn't get that motion in a second. Thank you. I just had the executive meeting attended.
Alright. Our next item on the agenda is the county clerk.
She just would like the approval to install this tempered safety glass around our counter for the total amount of one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents from Reed's Glass and would like to ask if it can be paid out of the courthouse permit.
You've heard the request. Do I hear a, a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the Co-Center EMS financial and medical report for March medical report. I presented that on Friday, so. Do I have a motion made to approve that report as it was presented?
I'll submit.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Judge.
Second by Commissioner Martinez. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then this morning, I have a Petersburg EMS report run for April of twenty-twenty. They had seven dispatches within the city, one outside for a total of eight dispatches. They had five transports within the city, one outside for a total of transports of two, or, I'm sorry, six. And non-transports of two. They had five billable runs within the city, one billable run outside of the city. For a total of six billable runs. They had a total revenue. Excuse me, for the amount of three thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight point six-six. A total expense of ten thousand, four hundred and eighteen point nine zero. Or a difference of negative six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents. Do I hear a motion to approve the Petersburg EMS report?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll stand, Judge.
Alright. The item number C is the UMC first quarter report. I presented that on Friday, so do I hear a motion that we would approve the UMC first quarter report for the EMS response?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The next item I have is the CTIF grant, which is a grant through the Texas Highway Department. We've received notice of this grant. And the deadline for this grant is May twenty-seventh. We have also been contacted by a vendor that has proposed doing and completing the work on this grant for us in addition to our, the grants that were eligible for totaled in one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. We're responsible for a ten percent match, which would be eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. The, if we go with the vendor, they'll receive a five percent fee for doing the work on this grant. If we do our own application and come up with the documents, it's due to the state. They have to be in by the twenty-seventh. County Attorney Jim Pyre said if we chose to go that route, that he would be available to review the application and the information that they need before sending it in. So, what I thought I would do this morning is ask if there was maybe two of the commissioners that would be willing to. First of all, let's, let's discuss, do we wanna hire the vendor or do we wanna try to do it ourselves? I think somebody turned behind the business and help inside information where they could get it now. Look back to your Jim, I guess he had, he said that he should be here about nine thirty. He's open, so.
Says, yes, one, one advantage, I think, towards you doing the outside vendor. You know, we might could even get some more money because not all, maybe not all counties would buy it. And that might be a surplus that we might could even get some more money, so, I mean, it's, we could do it either way, so, one advantage is that they have access. They would know about that money laid on the table that we wouldn't know of.
Okay. And I'm not opposed to letting them do it as well, because, you know, just looking at options.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright.
Overall, seems wrong, but somehow something.
So, what it sounds like is y'all are looking for, going to vendors. Now, the other part I would point to is, would there be a commissioner to them sit forward and work with the vendor to help them with the information that they need and documentation that they would need?
Now, does that, roads for all the, all the tiny or is that specific for, there's year old or?
Well, no, there's certain conditions within the grant that says that the roads that need to be repaired are, are, I believe it's, I don't have the document yet. It has to do with the. Energy department stuff, so. Like our roads over where they give the wind turbines and some stuff like that would, if I'm reading right, would qualify for, for those funds. I don't know how that determine, give the road is, is meets their criteria.
Because I, since that's in my precinct, I volunteered, you know, put the unit in other roads, you know, whatever. I'll be one of them. I'll volunteer.
Okay, alright. So, Mario will, will work with the vendor or work to do any application, whichever you choose. Now, part of the vendor, do y'all, you want me to table this until Jim? See if Jim comes in or do y'all go ahead and vote on it?
I'd say with the Jim, who is here is, which part is?
I'd be okay. Go ahead and vote on it.
I would.
Okay. Then do I hear a motion that we approve, are submitting a request for these funds? And that that request would go through Allison Bass and McKee. And they would work as our agent in trying to secure these funds.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Martinez. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Now, that grant, the way I understood it happened, due to road damage in the development of energy, which certainly applied to Mario's precinct, because that's where all the wind turbines were put in. They did receive a substantial amount of damage and, you know, and need to do a lot of work in there. As far as other ones, I, I don't have, I didn't have anything yet, but applied there in my precinct that I'm aware of. Maybe some apparel or Jimmy.
Did you have, did you have some transmission lines?
I do have some transmission lines.
Did they pull up across there? I think those roads that they used, those transmission lines, building those transmission lines were having, it was part of their usage, you know? Like the cell stations, so, I think a road, they got those transmission lines that were, yeah, involved, yeah. I think that was also qualified as some.
We, we could spend it real easily.
Yeah.
It sounds like lots of money, but it doesn't go far.
Let's get that back to clarify by, by who.
Yeah.
Alright. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. The next item we have is another grant request. This one comes from South Plains Association of Governors. And this is a COVID-nineteen grant. The money actually comes from the federal government, like lots of the grants that we apply for. They're given to the state and in the state models through the association to govern. So, with SPAG being our council of government, that's who we, we go through. And this one is due on June fifteenth. And so, really, here this morning just to see, I have a SPAG director's meeting tomorrow at ten a.m. And so, we'll discuss this a little further. But basically this morning, just to let you know that we would be owed for anywhere between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars. The primary purchase of things to purchase through this grant are, are the personal, personal protection equipment and other supplies. And so, do I hear a motion that we would pursue this grant? I'll do the application process. What usually happens is SPAG will give us an application to fill out and I'll do that and then we submit it back to SPAG. And they go through it and then they'll submit it to the state for the state's approval. So, this morning, could I get a motion to allow us to pursue this grant opportunity and allow me to submit an application for that?
I agree with you.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion?
Is this a hundred percent grant?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there is no match on it. And all the entities within our county are eligible. And so, the city of Plano, all the cities. So, but after talking to Jim, it would be better if we just apply for our, because these grants are pretty complicated in the paperwork and accounting process anyway. And then if you start putting more than what it first was, and if those deals didn't, it gets real, real fuzzy, so. Have a motion and a second to allow us to pursue this. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item E, we discussed on Friday, Peter Burton super and ended. That thing has been so fluid about what they wanted to, and I put it on the agenda before the governor did his last press conference and come out with his new executive orders. And so, they were hoping to have a graduation outside on May twenty-second. But then the governor came forward and said that unless you fell under that five cases or less, you would have to wait until after June first to have an outside graduation, so. Peter Burton said that we have theirs on June fourth. Haven't heard anything else from him, so I would say they just gotta wait until after June first, so. There'll be no action taken on that. Just take no action. Okay, now, the discussion of the COVID-nineteen declaration. Back when we did the declaration, our last declaration, we said it would go through till the day after. Review it and after the governor's orders, we have made some modifications to it. And so, we had, I gave each of the, I'll be the resolution number R twenty dash zero five eleven. I guess since Jim's asked me to read all the other one, I'll read this one. Y'all have something else to do for a few minutes, but I'm gonna do it and read this one. Resolution R twenty dash oh five eleven. A resolution of Hill County, Texas Commissioner's Court approving declaration of local disaster. County judges are ordered number two issue April thirtieth, twenty-twenty pursuant to the Texas Governor Code, Article four eighteen point one oh eight, extending the declaration of the local disaster of a local, the declaration of the local disaster till June eighth, twenty-twenty. Expanding reopening of businesses to add certain retail establishments, providing a penalty for the violation of the declaration of confinement of a thousand dollar and confinement in jail for up to one hundred and eighty days. Whereas a coronavirus, COVID-nineteen, has been recognized locally as contagious risk for virus. Whereas COVID-nineteen continues to spread and poses increasing imminent threat of disaster throughout Hill County and beyond. And whereas on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty pursuant to the authority provided, you know, Texas Governor Code four eighteen point one oh eight, the county judge of Hill County issued a declaration of local disaster, placing certain restrictions and procedures in place in order to protect and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare and be consistent with the national and state declarations of emergency and they will extend it by the Commissioner's Court through resolution twenty dash oh three two three on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty and resolution R twenty dash oh four oh six approved on April sixth, twenty-twenty. And whereas on April twelfth, twenty-twenty, the governor of the state of Texas renewed its statewide disaster proclamation for an additional thirty days, certifying that COVID-nineteen poses an imminent threat of disaster to all counties in the state of Texas. And whereas on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, the governor of the state of Texas issued an executive order GA eighteen effective until eleven fifty-nine p.m. or May fifteen, superseding executive order GA sixteen, expanding the reality of services and order the governor's safe strategic plan of Texas in response to the COVID-nineteen disaster alarming from reopening of businesses throughout Texas under certain terms and conditions while emphasizing certain cautionary measures like social distancing, limiting social gathering, and strongly encouraging people over the age of sixty-five to stay home as much as possible. And whereas on April thirty, twenty-twenty, in response to the governor's executive order GA eighteen, the county judge issued declaration of local disaster. County judges were permitted opening, reopening the businesses throughout Plano under certain terms and conditions while still emphasizing certain precautionary measures such as social distancing, limiting social gatherings, and strongly encouraging people over sixty-five to stay home as much as possible. And whereas the United States President Donald Trump and the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, have issued guidelines for opening up America, providing guidance on safely opening up American businesses and society, continuing to emphasize minimal travel, maximizing social distancing and avoiding social, socializing groups of more than ten people. And whereas on May fifth, twenty-twenty, the governor of the state of Texas issued executive order GA dash twenty-one effective until eleven fifty-nine on May nineteen, superseding executive order GA dash eighteen incorporating terms of executive order GA eighteen, expanding the reopening of certain businesses and services and clarifying terms used and additions used in proportions of executive order GA eighteen. Whereas that due to the issuance of GA twenty-one, the state of Texas Governor Code four eighteen point one oh eight, the Commissioner's Court believes it is in the best interest of Hill County and its citizens in order to protect and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, that additional measures must be taken to further contain COVID-nineteen and its spread throughout the county into a firm and incorporate County Judge's Order Number Two to give resolution, expand, continue the expansion of the declaration of local disaster without the measures outlined in hearing. Now, there's word the city council, the city of Plano, Texas hereby resolves and declares and orders, one, that the recitals outlined above are bound to be true and correct and are incorporated and fully set forth in hearing. Two, that declaration of local disaster, County Judge's Order Number Two, is hereby superseded by this resolution and to the extent of conflict between any term or provision of this resolution and terms of declarations or conditions of the declaration of local disaster, County Judge's Order Number Two issued on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty. The terms and conditions of this resolution control. Three, that all other terms and conditions of the County Judge's declaration of local disaster initially signed and executed by the County Judge on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty remains in full force and effective is continued to the extent it is not directly conflict with this resolution. Four, that by the authority granted over the Texas Governor Code four eighteen and by the general authority granted to Hill County, the following is hereby a, an adoption of executive order GA twenty-one, opening point. The governor's executive order GA twenty-one is hereby adopted by reference and is incorporated here as though set forth fully here in additionally the guidelines and regulations outlined in the governor's report to Hill County, entitled Texas Helping Texas, dated April twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, is also adopted to the extent that it does not conflict with this resolution. And all businesses, religious institutions, and citizens are encouraged to review and follow said guidelines. The social contacting of all persons residing in Hill County, Texas, shall, shall, except where necessary, to provide or obtain essential services or reopen services, minimize social gatherings and minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household to the extent the individuals are using shared or outdoor spaces. Individuals must at all times and reasonably as possible bring kind of social distancing that they see six feet from any other person when they are outside of residence. Two, all public and private gatherings of more than ten people occurring outside of a single household are prohibited, except as otherwise provided in the law. Nothing in this word prohibits the gathering of members of a single household or living in an apartment for use by one family. And three, travel away from the first and regular place of residence should be limited only to the purpose of obtaining essential goods and services, goods and services of a reopened business. goods and services of a reopened business or of a person's place of residence if otherwise prohibited. This order, further, for obtaining goods or services, calling those individuals absolutely, absolutely necessary to obtain such goods and services, should travel away from the place of residence. C, sick individuals, one, any person who is sick or currently experiencing common COVID-nineteen symptoms, including fever, cough, and shortness of breath, is hereby ordered to stay at home until such time. And A, he or she had no fever for at least seventy-two hours without the use of food or reducing medicines such as Tylenol. And B, his or her symptoms have improved. And C, at least fourteen days have passed since the symptoms first occurred. Out of two, if any person in the household is tested positive for COVID-nineteen or other household, they are hereby ordered to stay at home and self-quarantine for a period of at least fourteen days. Member of a household may have traveled to work, school, or anyone else, or anywhere else unless cleared by a medical professional. This order does not prohibit any person from leaving his or her residence to seek necessary medical or emergency care. D, citizens over sixty-five years of age, adult persons residing in Hill County, who are over the age of sixty-five are strongly encouraged to stay at home or at their current place of residence as much as possible and to maintain appropriate distance from any member of the household who has been out of residence in the previous fourteen days. Purposes of this order, residents include hotels, motels, shared rentals, and center facilities. It is, if it is necessary to leave residence, all persons should practice social distancing, good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, sanitation. Any specific closures in accordance with the guidelines from the Governor and the President of the CDC. The following commercial businesses for which social distancing guidelines are applicable or impossible remain closed. Out of one, bars, massage establishments, tattoo studios, piercing studios, sexually oriented businesses, commercial entertainment and amusement venues such as bowling alleys, video arcades, amusement parks, water parks, and splash beds. F, essential services. The following businesses are hereby deemed essential and may continue to operate in tight federal and CDC guidelines, following including affirmative steps to, affirmative steps to ensure that social distancing of six foot is maintained. One, grocery stores, convenience stores, drugstores, pharmacies, and mattress stores. Two, pet supply stores, veterinary clinics, and food and games, but not for great healthcare providers, healthcare facilities, including doctor and dental offices, physical therapists, hospitals, and clinics provided that adhere to the Governor's Executive Order regarding the planning of procedures. Four, vehicle fueling, maintenance, and repair facilities. Five, banks and financial institutions. Six, agricultural services, including plant and food cultivation, farming, fishing, and raising livestock. Seven, oil and gas services and productions. Eight, professional services, including attorneys of accountants, engineers, chiropractors, insurance agents, and other licensed professionals. Nine, office buildings where people work in individual or closed spaces or groups of individuals. Ten, daycare facilities. Eleven, homeless shelters providing services for people experiencing homelessness. Twelve, nonprofit providers of essential services. Thirteen, essential government services, facilities, supporting residential buildings, including hotels and motels, except for the group needed and mental spaces. Fifteen, transit facilities where people may be in transit, on way to transit, such as airports, bus stops, and bus stations. Sixteen, manufacturing, distribution, and logistics facilities. Seventeen, laundry vans and kindle bags. Eighteen, call centers. Nineteen, critical infrastructure business which support critical infrastructure or supply chain businesses described by the Cyber Infrastructure Security Agency, or as listed in the U.S. Department of Homeland Security guidance on the Essential Critical Infrastructure Workforce version three point zero. G, religious services. One, religious services conducted in churches, congregations, and houses of worship are considered essential. Religious institutions, churches, and places of worship are encouraged to conduct as many of their activities, including their services from home, through remote, remote audio and video services. All religious services conducted at the religious institution, church, or place of worship must be conducted consistently with the guidelines from the President and the CDC by practicing good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation, and by implementing social distancing to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. Additionally, all religious services conducted at the religious institution, church, or place of worship are strongly encouraged to adhere to the following guidelines outlined in the Governor's Report to Hill County, and Texas Health and Texas, dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty. All staff and employees are required to adhere to the following CDC guidelines, including affirmative steps to ensure that social distancing of six foot is maintained. Provisions outlined in this section apply funeral services, weddings, burials, and immortals that are not held inside a church or other place of worship. Wedding receptions, wedding receptions of funerals of immortals not held in a church or other place of worship may be conducted as long as it is within the CDC guidelines and the following, including affirmative steps to ensure that social distancing of six foot is maintained in accordance with the following guidelines. A, the total, or people attending such reception is going to get to twenty-five percent of the total capacity of the building of any big hand sanitizer, hand san- sanitizing stations should be made available. C, no tables of more than six people allowed. H, retail establishment and other businesses, unless otherwise specified in the law, particularly by this resolution. Retail establishments and other businesses as specifically described above as essential are allowed to reopen in accordance with provisions and conditions outlined in the Governor's Executive Order GA twenty-one. This resolution, all businesses, employees, customers, patrons must adhere to the guidelines from the President and the CDC, practicing good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation by implementing social distancing of six foot, and are strongly encouraged to adhere to the following guidelines outlined in the Governor's Report to Hill County, out of Texas Health and Texas, dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Additionally, we use to drive through pickup, delivery, and purchase items, delivery of merchandise as possible as highly appropriate for clarification purposes for following businesses and services we bring on the court. In school retail services for retail establishment that operate at twenty-five percent of their total listing capacity of these retail establishments. Down-in restaurant services for restaurants that can operate at twenty-five percent of the total listed occupancy. Other restaurants, excluding bars. Three, movie theaters that operate at twenty-five percent of the total listed occupancy or in the area for any string. Four, shopping malls that can operate at twenty-five percent of the total listed occupancy of the shopping mall. Provided open in the shopping malls for food and court. Down-in areas, players, interactive displays, and settings special name codes. Five, museums and libraries that operate at up to twenty-five percent of the total listing occupancy provided by the country. Any components of museums or libraries have interactive functions or exhibits, including child play areas, special name codes. Six, services provided by individual working lung in an office. And seven, effective twelve oh one A M, May eighth, twenty twenty. Eight, cosmetology stations, hair salon, pork shop, nail salon, shops, and other establishments where licensed cosmetologists and workers practice their trade, providing higher people the following condition with and for all such ops and salons and establishments must ensure at least six foot of social distancing between operating workstations. And two, face masks while not requiring strong purchase or by customer, by all customers and employees. B, handings salons provided by, all such salons must ensure at least six feet of social distancing between operating workstations and handings that are clean and disaffected after issues by individual, patron, or customer. C, swimming pools provided that, one, indoor swimming pools may operate at twenty-five percent of the total listed occupancy of the pool facility. And two, outdoor swimming pools may operate at up to twenty-five percent of normal operating limits as determined by the pool operator. Eight, effective twelve oh one A M on Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty. Eight, services provided by office workers and officers that can operate at twenty, up to the grade five individuals or twenty-five percent of the total office working room provided higher that the individuals maintain appropriate social distance. B, manufacturing services for facilities that operate at twenty-five percent of the total listing occupancy of the facility. C, gyms and exercise facilities and classes that operate at up to twenty-five percent of the total listing occupancy of the gym and exercise facility. Provided higher that the following conditions are met. Locker rooms and shower facilities must be closed, but reserved plenty of them. Two, equipment must be cleaned and disaffected after issues by customers, free clothes, covering the entirety and not required or highly encouraged. Now, in addition, or patios and restaurants and other venues that will reopen pursuant to the resolution and sent to the high frequency limitations, establishments here must comply with all the options and conditions under including ensuring parties maintain at least six foot distance apart from each other at all times, maintaining social distancing for all customers, providing for seating and seating, outdoor patio, and any underlying, no more than six people seated in the same tables. Part, public parks and offices, one, outdoor sporting areas are permitted to be opened. No more sports, traditions, and a single, in a sporting activity subject to the social gathering limitations outlined in this County Judge's Order. Other parks, including walking trails, back paths, playgrounds, whatever, open areas are open and available to be used by the public as long as patrons follow. Then on the CDC guidelines, ensuring the social distancing of six foot is maintained. Public swimming pools are being closed. Two, lock off courses located in Hill County, remain open and flowing to individuals who walk or walk to add and golf, park, and other facilities, so long as patrons follow. Then on CDC guidelines, ensuring the social distancing of six foot is maintained. Anyone riding in the golf cart is encouraged only to ride with someone who is a member of their household. The clubhouse, pro shop, locker room, and other built-up or facilities located in golf courses only provide up of less than a hundred occupancy to twenty-five percent of the total listing occupancy. J, nursing homes remain closed to outside visits in accordance with the guidelines of the President and the CDC and the Executive Order GA twenty-one. People shall not visit nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living facilities, and home-term care facilities unless approved by group of citizens as determined through the Act of Texas, not with human services inclusion. Nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living centers, and home-term care facilities shall follow protection for pro homes and practices set for the United H and H S state to minimize and remove staff from the facilities where possible. Add additional requirements. One, County Judge may require additional sanitation signage and social distancing practices for any business which remain open. Two, for all businesses, management of businesses should facilitate and encourage practicing social distancing, good hygiene, and feasible, require employees to work from home in order to achieve optimal isolation of COVID-nineteen. And ready County Judge, we are ready to restrict this out in this order as necessary to respond to the evolving circumstances in the operating generation of the County Judge's Declaration of Local Disaster issued on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, and extended by the Hill County Commissioners Court. I, in pursuant to four eighteen point one oh eight, the City of Texas Governor Code, this order shall be given prompt and general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the County. Hill County Board. Six, that pursuant to four eighteen point one seventy-three, Texas Governor Code, any person knowingly or intentionally violates this resolution or order, heads in office, punishable by a nine to one thousand dollars and is fired from the County Judge's Board. That is not to exceed one hundred and eighty days. Seven, that this resolution and order shall go into effect immediately with the public page and continue until November fifty-nine P M, Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty, unless renewed, extended, or amended or canceled by the County Judge or the Hill County Commissioners Court. Eight, that this resolution and the order authorized the County Judge pursuant to out of all provisions of Texas Governor Code four eighteen and Texas Health and Safety Code one twenty-two dash zero zero six, on behalf of Hill County, take any action necessary to promote health and suppress the virus enforcing applicable orders issued by Hill County Judges, or Hill County Judge, the Governor of the State of Texas, or the Texas Department of State Health Services related to suppressing COVID-nineteen virus, and ensuring compliance for those who do not comply with the County's rules and directives. Nine, that to the extent permitted by law, any local ordinance or administrative rule prescribed procedures for conduct of the county business, or any local ordinance or administrative rule that would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action of COVID with a disaster, including any local ordinance or administrative rule regarding contact affecting or procurement, which would impede the county emergency response necessary to help this declared disaster, or hereby suspend, but only for the prevention of this local part of this declared local disaster and nonparticular remedy purposes. Then, to the extent this order is complex with the Governor's Order GA twenty-one regarding the regulation of essential business services. The Executive Order GA twenty-one controls, and the County Judge may report and amend this order and any subsequent order to be consistent with the Executive Order GA twenty-four. Eleven, the County Judge is authorized to use all available resources of Hill County we need and necessary to comply with this resolution. Approved by the Hill County Commissioners Court and is regularly on the eleventh day of May twenty twenty. And I hope, okay, you've heard what I've just read. But don't ask me to read it. Do I have a motion to adopt this declaration? Or what's about this resolution? Also move?
I move.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Have a second?
Second.
Second by the issue. Kelly, any discussion?
Judge, I have a question. What does it mean for the courthouse and the justice building?
What we've decided to do is just keep, as we have been delivering access and encouraging all the standards provided for social distancing, good hygiene. So, we'll continue to do as much as we can through the vote. In fact, the office of what administration, we won't be allowed to conduct any type of personal court proceedings till at least June first, twenty twenty. Myself and district judges and partners, we got to come up with guidelines and operational arrangements to secure that office of what administration before June first. So, here, it will be sometime in June before we're about to possibly open it for him to just general try to get to open one in one on a beginning. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to be aware that we're working on possibly, and I'm talking about the foster shield, having a permanent hospital come in and test whether it wants to, of course, it's voluntary, but there's no cost to the county for the antihyperton. So, just if I have a question for you.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all of your favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, the next item we have on the agenda is basically doesn't need any action just to make you aware that you should receive the notice from Texas Association of Counting